Welcome. My name is Mary Keating Scott and I am a member of the Cheyenne League of Women Voters and your host for this forum. The Zoom master is Kari Ekins and she will control the screen and our timekeeper is Roberta Coats. I thank you for your interest in the Cheyenne City Council Ward Three election. For more than 100 years, the League of Women Voters has been a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that works to help people to be engaged in their government, to be informed and to vote. This forum is being recorded and will be posted to our Facebook page and YouTube channel. This forum includes candidates for Cheyenne City Council Ward Three. As the moderator for this forum, I will be asking questions of the candidates. The race for Cheyenne City Council Ward Three has three candidates, Dr. Michelle Aldrich, Mark Moody and Richard Johnson. All three candidates are here and have agreed to participate in the voter forum. Each candidate will be given two minutes to introduce themselves. Michelle, please introduce yourself. Two minutes, please.
Well, thank you, Mary, and thank you to the Legal Women Voters for hosting this forum this evening. I'm Dr. Michelle Aldrich and I am running for a second term representing Ward Three on the Cheyenne City Council. I grew up here in Cheyenne. My parents moved here in 1969 and I am a product of the Cheyenne Schools along with the University of Wyoming. I've been a long-term educator and I am really proud and honored to be able to serve representing Ward Three. I don't see myself as a politician, but simply as a neighbor who stepped up. And so I would love to have an opportunity to do a second term and complete the projects that we've started and continue building on the foundation here in our community. I am a big believer in communication and have really worked hard to make sure that we're not making decisions about people without people. You'll, you probably know that when I first got elected to my first term, that I began a council and coffee that meets on the third Saturday of every month at Das Bog located at College in Pershing, so that voters and constituents and citizens in our community had an opportunity to come out and visit with myself and other city council people. We love hearing your ideas. We love hearing your comments, your concerns. It's always interesting to hear from people who have lived in other areas and communities and have found things that they think might work also in Cheyenne. So I appreciate this opportunity and I would appreciate your consideration and your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Mark, will you please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself? You have two minutes.
All right, thank you. And again, thank you to Legal Women Voters for sponsoring this and I do appreciate you guys taking time out of your busy schedule to have us here for this very important election. I am Mark Moody. I'm running for Ward Three. This would be my first term. As my motto states, new leadership for Cheyenne, because I believe we need to fresh perspective for town and also we need to have more common sense within our city council. And a lot of residents and business owners have come to me saying we need to improve basic services and also make it easier for people to have more of a say in their government. And we have said that we have to get more back to the common sense aspects within our government. And of my qualifications, I do have a master's degree in geography. I'm GIS certified. I am also an educator. I teach at a community college in Colorado, Well County. And with my GIS certification, I understand how the real world operates. I understand about zoning and also how the GIS system operates. And I do volunteer at the Knights of Columbus. I am the treasurer for them right here at our council 801. And also I'm an elected precinct member for Laramie County Republican Party and have been very involved with them. So that's a little bit of my civic engagement that I do. And again, I do humbly ask for your vote. Early voting does start next Tuesday, October 8th, right at the courthouse. Make sure you have ID and I'm the pro-business, pro-neighborhood, pro-law and order and pro-transparency and accountability candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Richard, would you please introduce yourself? Two minutes, please.
Only two minutes, huh? All right, so can I start over? Just kidding, guys. I already did that before the meeting. So I just wanted to introduce myself. I am Richard Johnson. This will be my third term, but non-consecutive. I took a break in 2019 due to my employer going out of business. I have served on the Cheyenne Historic Preservation Board, the Cheyenne Animal Shelter, the Laramie County GIS and the Cheyenne Airport Board during the time that I've been on council and then I was a by proxy through Rooted in Cheyenne, even though I didn't serve on their board. I have been here pretty much 50 years with the exception of the four years where my parents moved back to Pine Bluffs after I was born and then a four-month stint in Omaha in 1993 and then a six-month stint in Charlotte, North Carolina in 1995. When I first was elected in 2014, people thought it was funny because they, I did it on a dare from my dad. He said, "You rattled the cage so well on the outside. Let's see what you can do on the inside." I put my name in. It was pretty much a race of all new faces on there because Georgia Royals had stepped down. And then as I stated, I took a break in 2019, came back in 2020. Now I'm continuing on in regards to what my work is. Most people will know me from my first run of Richard Johnson, You Failed This City, where it pretty much caused basically undue chaos amongst the community in regards to people getting their voices out there. It was a complete populist movement in regards to that and I did repeal like 33 laws on the first time I was on there. So on this term, I guess I am now part of the old boy network as far as I've heard that I'm more traditional and everything that I've locked last or just like my beard, I guess my thoughts are getting grayer and I'm not the new fresh voice on city council. So yep, I'm just looking, if you want to vote for me, you can. If you support the other candidates, of course, you have a selection on there. Just vote.
Thank you. We will now go into the questions. As we said, we will rotate the order. But Michelle, I will start with you, then we'll go to Mark and then to Richard. Michelle, what do you believe are the greatest challenges and opportunities currently facing Cheyenne and why? Two minutes, please.
Well, that is a great question and I think that we have several, we have, actually the future is very bright for Cheyenne. We have really experienced a lot of growth and development. I'm proud to say that it's been planned growth and development. I think that's extremely important. But I think that some of the challenges that we're facing are maintaining, being able to maintain what we currently have. I think that happens through fiscal concern. When we've, Richard and I first came into office, we had a pretty minimal amount of reserves available and that has grown to over 200, I believe recently it was 267 days or 247 days of reserve. And when we came into office, there was about 60 days of reserve. So we've actually been able to increase our savings in case of an emergency. I think that's really important. When we came into office, we also had, just come in after 30 employees had been riffed the previous year and it was important to, for us to be able to make sure that those city services were reestablished and being, those departments were fully staffed, which we've been able to do and of course increase our employee wages. I also think that we inherited a lot of deferred maintenance. And so working on streets and infrastructure has been hugely important as a challenge that we continue to face. And also public safety. As we grow, it's important to continue to make sure we have plenty of fire and police protection. But planned growth is and development are, I think, are challenges as well as our opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Mark, same question. What do you believe are the greatest challenges and opportunities currently facing Cheyenne and why? You have two minutes to respond.
All right, thanks for the question. Say number one would be crime and law and order. This has been a top issue. The KJAB poll has done on that. We do need to have more officers shift and also ordinances to have this pro-toprants policy, especially for drag racing, because I have seen that on Lincoln Way late at night and also in the garage. And number two, affordable housing. Again, as I said in previous forums, we need to delete at least one UDC code per meeting. Have a task force appointed by the mayor to, from us the city council, one from the Southeast Wyoming Bowers Association, somebody from the Real Estate Association and then somebody in general, business or construction. And number three, I would also say transparency and accountability. A lot of people feel their voices are not being heard. I know it's great that we are having, you know, in Ward Three especially with open forums there at Das Bog. But we do need to make sure if there's going to be big projects, you know, whether anything, there needs to be more public involvement. I'd say in Casper, they've actually done pretty well at the gravel pit, whether you support it or not. There have been at least four public hearings on that. We need to have more of that. We're going to do some really large here in the town or if a big company is coming in. But we do have golden opportunities. We can actually be a manufacturing hub with our great logistics park. We can also be a hub, you know, for Wyoming traditions, okay, which I'll get into in the next question. And also I would say we have an opportunity to, to have, you know, the planned growth as Dr. Aldrich mentioned, again utilizing the GIS analysis.
Thank you, Mark. Richard, what do you believe are the greatest challenges and opportunities facing Cheyenne and why? Two minutes, please.
Kind of going off of what Mayor Collins has stated and then I've worked with him in regards to this is water. With the Colorado River Compact, if Arizona, Nevada, California are able to win their court battles, all of a sudden we see thousands of acres of water that are no longer going to be available in Cheyenne's network. That will stop all growth. That will stop all building. That will stop all selling. That will stop everything. Everything will become a trophy and basically a ghost town if this amount of water is, you know, removed from us. I've worked with BOPU on, in 2021, we did modifications through the Title 13 of City Code. That was 76 pages of revisions. It went through two DEQ evaluations before it was even brought before the city council. That was a lot of work that me and their team had put into those revisions. In regards to transparency, I know I bring a lot of topics that, you know, the underbelly of society brings up to me that they just want introduced. And so as far as transparency, not only do I do coffee and counsel with Michelle, I've written op-ads for every single piece of legislation I've, in the Tribune Eagle, I've went on the TV station telling everybody exactly what I'm going to do. I've went on KGAAB and Town Square Media and told them exactly what I was going to do. So I, and I also did this before I brought anything forward so that they didn't feel that they were being surprised. It was always done two weeks in advance and before introduction so that people could actually come to the podium, contact all of us independently before introduction so that they had at least that three to four week time to address. But as far as you're concerned, we cannot move forward if we don't take care of our water issues.
Thank you, Richard. We will now go on to question number two. Mark, you will be the first to respond and then Richard and then Michelle. How would you prioritize funding for different types of city amenities distributed throughout various neighborhoods? What would be your highest priority and your lowest priority? Two minutes, please.
All right, thank you. First, I want to say the city council and the mayor has to treat the state's money as if they're own. Because like I said, it's our money, taxpayers' money. Okay, so we got to make sure that it is fiscally responsible, fiscally conservative as it needs to be. As Wyoming law states, the state is required to provide the following. By response and law enforcement, infrastructure, sanitation, sewer and water. That is required by Wyoming state law. All have to be funded and they have to be funded equally. That is required by law. Because if they're not, then we are violating Wyoming statute. That is the highest priority for all. That was required by Wyoming law. Lowest priority for me overall, okay? The new greenway sections, I'm not saying a greenway infrastructure currently in place, but new sections. The reason is because we need to repair some of the current decaying structure we see in Martin Luther King Park. I've seen it. Okay, there does need to be repairs there with the bridges. And also I've actually been in some of the tunnels. They need to be looked at to prevent any leakages that could be potentially occurring. So those need to be looked at carefully before we want to add more of the greenway. And the greenway is good. I've talked with residents. They like utilizing it. But we got to make sure that our current infrastructure is good. So that would be a lowest on tone poll for now. Anything new needed correct and fix our current infrastructure and our current amenities we have now, conservatively responsible with it.
Thank you, Mark. Richard, how would you prioritize funding for different types of city amenities distributed throughout various neighborhoods? What would be your highest priority and your lowest priority?
Actually, I think that we've done fairly well and it was something that was started with Mayor Orr in regards to, prior to the budget sessions, that all departments were able to come forward and actually present their budget requests that the council could isolate by a specific section on what was acquired or what was being done in their specific departments. So I realize that, you know, what Mark states in regards to state law, but there's, you know, multiple other facets in city government, you know, that also serve other parts of the community that might be less known. As far as, I don't really view priorities because it's kind of a weird question. I kind of view all of our departments as equals. I can tell you on my first run on city council that community recreation events was always coming for scraps and so we always had to pull out of reserves to even fix a slide that had been shot by a shotgun in Lincoln Park and had to wait till the next budget session to fix it. And so in 2022, I wrote a resolution that passed that allocated five years worth of lot, YOLO monies towards CRE. And so far, the, the baseball fields are now getting basically new lavatories. We were able to finish the pickleball court in Lyons Park with those fundings. And so Community Recreation Events said that this was completely outside the box thinking on doing a specific earmark to assist their agency, who had always been, you know, the last on the totem pole. They were always the first on riffs, but the last for projects. And so that was something I did. So as far as bias towards any specific department, I have none. I treat them all equally and I understand their roles and responsibility in the community.
Thank you, Richard. Michelle, how would you prioritize funding for different types of city amenities distributed throughout various neighborhoods? What would be your highest priority and your lowest priority?
Well, thank you for asking that question, Mary. My understanding is you're asking about amenities. So Mr. Moody talked a lot about what's required by statute. Mr. Johnson spoke a lot about departments, but you're asking about amenities. So I think first and foremost, we have to be able to maintain what we currently have and that has to be a priority. I think that there's a misunderstanding about state statute. It does not require that we fund all of those five required items equally. It requires that we fund those items. But again, we're talking about amenities. So when we think about amenities, it's all of those things that are above and beyond what's required by statute. We recently had a work session where we had a park master plan that was brought before us that it's being worked on currently that is actually being based on data and I like making data-informed decisions. The park master plan looked at how many people in our community are within 10 minutes of being able to walk to a park from their home. And we found that everyone in this community is able to walk to a park within 10 minutes of their home. I think that our, again, our priority has to be maintenance. And I would say that we need to make sure that our amenities, including the greenway and parks, any recreational facilities are equally distributed throughout our community, that they're not all located in just one ward. While we represent Ward Three, at the end of the day, we represent the entire community. I also would encourage new public partner and private partnerships, just like what we've seen with the, what was originally called the Eastside Park, which is now known as Kiwanis Park and also the new Rotary Park that runs along Dell Range. Those would be my priorities is to consider those, to continue those public and private partnerships.
Thank you, Michelle. We will now start with the flash feedback. And you will be given a word or phrase and we're looking for a response of just one or two sentences and no more than about 30 seconds. So I'm going to start with Richard. Richard, your phrase is off-track betting.
Interesting question because that's actually determined currently by the Gaming Commission and the county commissioners. The only time it comes before city council is when it's the transfer of a liquor license.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, tax incentives.
I think tax incentives are a great way to work towards the complicated issue of affordable housing. I think tax incentives are powerful and can be used and leveraged in order to achieve goals sometimes that are difficult to achieve with just governmental funds.
Thank you, Michelle. Mark, your word is homelessness.
Springport just ruled six to three that municipalities are allowed to do camp and bans. We did start the Crow Creek area. I like to see it in the big sewage drain pipes because now it's a safety hazard. People are in those circumstances, but also sanitation issue as well.
Thank you. We'll go to question number three. Richard will go first, followed by Michelle and then Mark. And your question is, how can Cheyenne leverage its historical and cultural assets to support existing businesses, recruit new businesses, enhance community pride and attract tourism? Two minutes, please.
Well, Dominic Bravo from Visit Cheyenne told me when we went to the National Finals Rodeo in Las Vegas that every time he sees me, I'm usually wearing some local business. So I'm always promoting, even when I go out of town, you can see me even in Egypt wearing a Rooted in Cheyenne shirt. So I'm always promoting Cheyenne. But it just depends on what people view as the actual historical integrity. In 2017, I went and attended a Cheyenne Frontier Days elected officials dinner where they hired Disney Imagineers to find out exactly what was going on with Frontier Days and the numbers because the, or the frontier tradition was going by the wayside. Granted, there was flare-ups, you know, like maybe, you know, Beyonce does something or maybe, you know, there's the Old Town Road that comes out or Yellowstone that, you know, rekindle some of it, but they expect, or they expected by 2034 that they were going to start seeing their numbers drastically go down unless they made some kind of revisions to their actual study. And so it's, it's kind of hard to actually say in the Western tradition because even according, like Michelle said, according to data and studies, it shows that this has having a shelf life, just like 1890, you know, with Manifest Destiny, that that's when it came to an end. And so potentially that's what CFD and, you know, the community kind of follows along on its rebranding. We probably are going to have to reevaluate on our, our next step in regards to how we want to present ourselves to the world.
Thank you, Richard. Michelle, same question. How can Cheyenne leverage its historical and cultural assets to support existing businesses, recruit new businesses, enhance community pride and attract tourism?
Well, I think that Cheyenne has a rich history in several areas. One that is, it has not been fully probably exploited is probably a poor word, but used as widely as it could to attract tourists and visitors is our rich history with the Union Pacific Railroad. We are, have been working on a 15th Street railcar experience. There's a variety of ideas and thoughts that are currently being explored. And so that I think is an area that can definitely be looked at and expounded upon. I also think that that Western heritage that Richard talked about, you're right, it was in decline. But I think since COVID and since the onset of the rodeo television network, they've seen their viewership and their attendance grow incredibly. People still associate, whether we like it or not, Cheyenne and Wyoming with the Old West. And I think that we need to capitalize upon that and continue to build upon that. We have a quality of lifestyle here that is unfound in most places in the world. It's very few places where you can leave your office at 5:00 and be on the golf course by 5:15 or be at Curt Goudy by 5:30. People who love and enjoy outdoor recreation find Wyoming and find, especially Cheyenne and Laramie County to be readily accessible to the outdoor amenities that we offer. We're within driving distance of large cities. If people would like to have a large city experience, they can experience that and come home and be back sleeping in their own beds at night. So I think we have the best of all worlds right here in Cheyenne and we have a great opportunity to build upon that and to help small businesses and encourage tourism.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Mark, how can Cheyenne leverage its historical and cultural assets to support existing businesses, recruit new business, enhance community pride and attract tourism? Two minutes, please.
All right, thank you for that question. I agree, you know, Wyoming and Cheyenne are known as the Old West and our state law for a long time was forever west. So we definitely need to capitalize on that. Know we do it during Frontier Days, but definitely in downtown as well too. You know, there could potentially be some businesses that go in with the Old West experience. But let's go further in that. Cheyenne, Wyoming are also known for hunting, fishing and firearms in general. We can attract more firearm manufacturers here since Centipal 116 passed bipartisanly. That actually is allowing for more lawful firearm commerce and they're immune from a lot of lawsuits. So that, we could be potentially a hub for manufacturer for firearm accessories, ammunition and also just firearms in general. They want to leave states that are more restrictive. You know, we have a logistics park. We also have the other business park here near I-25. And also we're having Eagle Call come in. That's a fishing company from Denver. You know, they could be a sponsor for our fishing day and that. I would like to see more of that where we really, you know, emphasize, say, National Hunting Day, National Fishing Day, because that is Wyoming right there. I mean, it's even our state constitution that these are rich traditions that we have here in our great state. So I definitely would like to see more of that and sponsorship by some of these companies. I mean, we're not going to get the shooting complex, but definitely we can be a hub for that and provide jobs. Emphasize, we're a right-to-work state, no corporate income tax and no income tax, personal income tax as well.
Thank you, Mark. And the last question, Michelle will go first and followed by Mark and then Richard. On a scale of one to five, with one being very unsafe and five being very safe, how would you assess the current state of public safety in our city? Two minutes, please.
Well, thank you, Mary, for that. I know that when we look at data, that the crime rate in Cheyenne has actually decreased. And one of the things that I would just venture to say is that on a scale from one to five, I believe that we are a four or even a 4.5. I think there's always room for improvement. We see some things like speeding and street racing. We're, in fact, we're getting ready to have a forum, a community-wide forum about street safety in our community. And those are things that I think we need to take really seriously. I think that unfortunately, because we do sit at the interstate, the corner of Interstate I-25 and I-80, that sometimes we see a higher crime rate than what we would like to because of people that are passing through and because of our proximity to the Denver metropolitan area and Northern Colorado, the Front Range. But on a scale from one to five, I would say that we are probably at a 4.5. I've never been afraid to walk through our community. I've never been afraid to walk in our community alone at night. And I think that we still have a real sense of security here and safety that if you travel outside of Wyoming or anywhere else across the world, you will know that the safety and the crime rate that we have here is actually much lower than what you would find in other places. Can we do a better job? Absolutely. Can we enforce the laws that we already have on the books? Absolutely. I don't think that there's a need for new ordinances or new city laws. I think we have plenty. I think that we just need to enforce what we have and we need to make sure that we have sufficient staffing of our police department and law enforcement in order to address those minor concerns.
Thank you, Michelle. Mark, on a scale of one to five, with one being very unsafe and five being very safe, how would you assess the current state of public safety in our city?
It does depend on where you're at, but overall I'd probably say a three to three point five. And the reason is because I was reading some articles. I know back in March of 22nd, 24th, Cap City News, it did say there was a crime increase by 2%. You know, it seemed like a lot, but still a lot. There was a decrease in property crimes, but an increase in other crimes. So I, I've actually talked with residents throughout the city, not just in Ward Three and there is a, definitely a perception of a lot of these increases here. And I would say that there does need to be an ordinance for zero tolerance for street racing and drag racing because we've had people die. because we've had people die. And that is very tragic, especially our children. So that needs to be zero tolerance there. Hey, look at, see what other municipalities have done in terms of that throughout the country. And also too, again, perception is reality. I mean, if people don't feel safe, you know, that's, i- i- it is what it is. We've heard how people don't feel safe in the parking garage before. You know, I know there's, but there was a forum on that just a couple of months ago. So we really have to, you know, look overall, you know, at all the crime rates, not just property crime, but definitely that's why we need to have more officers per shift. And we got to start really enforcing the laws that are on the books here to, because again, if we don't, we can start having the problems that Denver and Aurora has. We've seen what's happened in Aurora. You know, and I keep saying, we do need an ordinance saying we are not a sanctuary city like Denver or Aurora. I mean, Aurora did actually pass something there, say they're not, so I do take that back. However, it's spilling over there into Aurora and we've seen the mess down there. So again, it's a lot closer than you think. I mean, we're only about, you know, 100 miles from Denver and Aurora. So I would, that's why I say it's, uh, three, three point five.
Thank you, Mark. Richard, on a scale of one to five, with one being very unsafe, to five being very safe, how would you assess the current state of public safety in our city? Two minutes, please.
A five. I took my mom to Cairo, Egypt last year, nine days after Hamas attacked Jerusalem. So we, our trip actually canceled. My mom and I had a conversation of whether or not we were going to keep our trip, trip. We let Lufthansa cancel for us. We were supposed to fly to Tel Aviv seven days after Hamas attacked. So when it comes to safety, yeah, I've been into other areas of the world where literally I was going into war zones. And you know, so when you talk to me about safety in Cheyenne compared to how I felt in Cairo, yeah, definitely with protesters that were anti-American. Little different situation than, you know, walking around the, uh, cities or the city streets of Cheyenne. Mostly, Michelle and I have actually talked about this a couple of times in regards to the blotter briefs is we compare on how many people we know in the blotter briefs, either her former students or people that I just randomly know. And then usually we know the families that are associated with those people that are in the blotter brief. So there's a family element in regards to this. Um, I do support the police when they do more of the PSAs to say, lock your doors because a lot of property crime is as simple as people just leaving their doors unlocked at their houses or in their cars that, you know, a lot of people just go down the street, click the lock. If it opens, yeah, you're right for the target. So a lot of that property crime happens, you know, just by negligence on behalf of the people that, you know, I guess, felt a little safe at one time and now don't because they've been robbed. I mean, even I've been robbed in the parking garage. They stole my, uh, Leatherman, but I guess what, I left my door unlocked. So that's my fault. But yeah, definitely a five. Um, if you ever see me walking around the streets in a hoodie in the winter time, I look like the element that is on KGB and Cap City News. That, that looks like me. I've been mistaken by the Camia Shelter as one of their residents. So, and that was by the director and she goes, nope, that's just Richard. So I think it's a misconception.
Thank you. Well, I think we have time for one more phrase of our flash feedback. Michelle, your word is arboretum.
Well, I think the arboretum is a treasure and I am hopeful that the city will be able to work with our State Parks Department in order to make that a state park. Uh, there's a lot of history there and a lot of historical, um, evidence for, uh, weather resistant plants. So I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do in partnership with the State Parks Department.
Thank you. Mark, Belvoir Ranch.
All right, thanks for that. Um, I would say, um, that has cost a lot of money, $12 million. I would say now we need to really look at, you know, we're going to have these amenities there. What is the overall cost and benefit to the community? Because I've talked with residents, not many go there, be more tourists. So we really got to look at from a fiscally responsible aspect. Is it actually beneficial to residents of the community?
Thank you. Richard, disaster preparedness.
Why couldn't I get the arboretum? I have the, I have the banner that got cut for when we opened the National Cemetery Road on Monday right here. So go ahead. Can I redo? Just kidding. Can you repeat the question?
Disaster preparedness.
Okay, uh, pretty much, uh, being at the beginning or the end of the pandemic, when Michelle and I got sworn back in, our emergency response is very good. In fact, all of our cell phones blow up when there's any kind of, uh, any kind of real like disaster type thing where we need to be in contact. So the communication is very, very good amongst all departments, whether that be the school, the military, city, county, health, all of it. And then, um, I mean, my email gets about 10:15 just on a thunderstorm in the summer. So I think we're doing pretty well as far as our communication is to get the resources where we need to go.
Thank you. All right, now we are ready for your closing statements. You will have two minutes to make your closing statement. I'm going to start with Mark, followed by Richard and then Michelle. Mark, would you please give your closing statement?
All right, thank you again for legal women voters for hosting us for our very important 2024 election. Um, again, I'm Mark Moody, writing here to be your next, uh, councilman for Ward Three. You know, I do have knowledgeable in GIS, but also too, I am a quick learner. I am on the adjustment board here for Cheyenne. So I understand meetings are, in fact, I remember a couple of weeks ago, we had a three-hour meeting. So I know the work it takes to ask the right questions of people. And again, we do need more stability in our politics and that's why we say compromise. I'm willing to work and talk with people, especially about deleting some of the UDC codes because I want to make sure that is a long-term goal we have, delete one UDC code per meeting. Making sure we do have an ordinance saying we're not a sanctuary city. Making sure we have more officers hired per shift. Making sure that we have an ordinance saying zero tolerance for drag racing and possibly some other crimes that are impacting our community. Making sure that we do have that task force for the UDC. And then also too, making sure that we don't have, we ban private equity firms for buying up single-family housing. Because again, affordable housing is a big concern. And also too, you know, as my motto says, new leadership for, uh, Cheyenne. That is my motto. I can bring in the fresh perspective, bring in professionalism, and again, be your voice here for us, have common sense, conservative solutions for our city. And I do humbly ask for your vote. Early voting has, will start on Tuesday at the courthouse. Be sure to bring your ID, probably your driver's license. You can early vote through November 4th and election day is November 5th. MarkMoodyForWyoming.com for more information and thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you, Mark. Richard, your closing statement, please, within two minutes.
So, uh, pretty much, oh, I thought I read the question where I was supposed to tell you what I did for nonprofit work or what I did for the community. I guess I misread that, it must have been lower on. So, um, I am Richard Johnson, once again, um, in regards to comments on regards to fiscal conservancy, like Michelle stated, 267 days in reserves. I am usually the one that takes on any project that, um, where it requires fundraising to go out there and find the funds to, uh, take care of the amenities that the council doesn't completely feel is all our responsibility. So I am about all the community outreach as, uh, completely possible as was just done this year with Vernon Baker, uh, sculpture that we, um, are putting at the Civic Center Commons. That was not funded at all by city dollars, that was all privately fundraised. Um, I have stories for miles in regards to, uh, fundraising efforts in this city from the skate park to the splash pad, to the Universal Playground, to Vernon Baker, to Rooted in Cheyenne, and hundreds of other nonprofits that I've done. I think I calculated that I've raised about $3.5 million for the city of Cheyenne just for things that, um, I thought belonged here or just to assist in programming that I thought was important. So, um, like I said at the beginning of my statement, and I've said this since the very beginning, ever since I did my first League of Women Voters interview in 2014, is that you always have a choice. And if I'm not your choice, by all means, I don't, I'm not going to sales pitch you to vote for me. I encourage you to vote for your best candidate and do your damn research. If I'm not the person, then, and I know you can find tons of crap on me on the internet. I have Facebook groups, you know, they're like asking for my demise. I get called a Nazi for two straight years. You know, it's, I get all of that stuff. Everything is always bad, so it's not as glamorous as it seems. And I got my 15 second mark. So Richard Johnson, Cheyenne City Council Ward Three candidate, uh, as Mark said, go and vote.
Thank you, Richard. Michelle, can you give us your closing statement, please?
Absolutely. Again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this forum together. Um, I'm Dr. Michelle Aldrich. I am running for reelection to, for a second term in Ward Three, representing Ward Three here in Cheyenne. Um, I always want to be worthy of your vote as a voter. Um, I would appreciate your consideration for your vote. When you go to vote, um, absentee ballots will be distributed on October 8th, next Tuesday. Um, I made three commitments when I ran for, uh, this office four years ago and those are the same three commitments that I stand by, uh, still today. If you call me or you email me, you will get a response within 24 hours. I always want to make sure that we're making decisions about you and with you, um, not, um, without you. And I think that's hugely important. Communication has been one of the, uh, keystones of my candidacy and of my service. I also believe in term limits. Um, if I am reelected, this will be my last term on city council. I'm a big believer that if you can't get done in eight years, what you want to get done, you need to move on and let somebody else try. Um, public office is not something that people should be in long enough that they can retire from that. And lastly, um, I am a completely self-funded. I would encourage you to follow the money. Look and see where candidates are taking donations from. Um, I am thrilled that in our ward, we have three strong candidates, um, for voters to choose from. Uh, having competition always makes us run, run stronger and harder. And, um, so I want to thank Richard and Mark for, um, a race that has been run well. And I look forward to, uh, this coming to a close in the next 30 days or so. Um, and I will work and serve with whoever the voters send, um, to represent Ward Three. Um, I would ask for your vote on November 5th. And again, thank you for the honor and the privilege of serving as your city councilwoman for the last four years. And I look forward to hopefully serving for another four years. Thanks so much and have a great evening.
Thank you, Michelle. On behalf of the Cheyenne League of Women Voters, we thank you for your participation and for your interest in this Cheyenne City Council Ward Three race. Finally, your voice, your vote is your voice. Use it.